One last time, anyone want to speak on this?
Move to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion before we do so? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. Let's call to order the meeting of the common council for Monday, March 16th, 2009. I'd like to ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our umbrella indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, will the, okay, I've got a couple awards. Um, or I've got a award. Get myself a little organized here. I've got an appreciation award here for Timothy R. Caruso. Mr. Caruso has served as a member of the City of Hudson Public Utility Commission for nineteen years. The last, uh, how long's it been? About ten years as the president?
Ten years or something like that.
Tim, so if not, uh, his voice isn't so great tonight, so we're not going to ask him to give a half hour speech, just the five minutes. Anyway, we really thank you for all your service to the water utility and the utility commission. Thank you. There we go. Thanks a lot. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Brokaw, is Excuse District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Burchill?
Here.
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone who's here who would like to address the council about any item that's not on tonight's agenda, but that may, uh, come before the council or be a matter of interest to the council in the future, this is your time to speak. Would anyone like to address the council tonight? Okay. Let's move on to our consent agenda items. Would you please read those items?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2009. To approve the continuance of the conditional use permit for the fuel station at 1611 Maxwell Drive, Caribbean Car Wash with the following conditions. The fuel station to remain in compliance with state and federal requirements. The permit will be reviewed for continuance in March 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $422,209.51. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a special event permit for the Hudson Boosters Incorporated to hold booster days in Lakefront Park, June 27th to July 8th, 2009, including setup and takedown dates. Contingent on receipt of the required certificates of insurance from the boosters and the carnival. The addition of six off-street disability parking spaces immediately east of the bath house. That Digger's hotline be contacted for markings prior to setup and that council approve the request to reduce the level of liability insurance to $1 million from $3 million. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B Retailer's License to the Hudson Boosters Incorporated to sell beer and wine in Lakefront Park on May 12th, 2009 for a Green Bay Packers tailgate tour. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B Retailer's License to the Hudson Boosters Incorporated to sell beer and wine in Lakefront Park during Hudson Booster Days, July 2nd to July 5th, 2009. To approve the issuance of a secondhand article dealer's license to Johanna Cheitel, doing business as Restore &amp; Recycle, 404 Second Street, Hudson, Wisconsin. To approve the request of Final Stretch Incorporated to use the Lakefront Park van shell for the Gopher to Badger race on Saturday, August 2nd, 2009. And to use the Lakefront Park van shell and bath house for a triathlon race on September 5th and 6th, 2009. To approve the barricading of Locust Street between Second and Third Streets for the 2009 Classic Car Shows to be held on the second Friday of each month from May to September. To place on file the Public Utility Commission minutes of March 10th, 2009. That is all.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Burchill's recused. Roll call, please.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
And the consent agenda is approved. I've got a, would you, without any objection, would you allow me to make my appointment to the park board now rather than at the end of the meeting since the appointee is here? Anyone? She won't have to stay the whole time. I'd like to appoint Susie Fallon, 706 Orange Street, to the park board. She's been a resident of Hudson since 2004, has two children, age four and six, frequently uses the parks. Susie is an attorney, former corporate executive, currently operates her own business, and I think should be a great addition to the park board. So she'll be filling in for the seat that was held by Tammy Erskine, who has resigned, and there's about three and a half years left on that term of a five-year term. And so without, or if you want to vote on it, or without any objection, we'll appoint Susie to the park board. Stand up and give your answer. Thank you, Susie.
You need a formal motion or no?
Sure, if you want to.
Move to approve.
A second.
Motion in a second to approve any discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you are appointed. Congratulations. Thanks for coming tonight. This next agenda item comes from the Plan Commission. It is the signage plan for Heritage Market, Heritage Greens, planned residential development located west of State Trunk Highway 35 and north of Hanley Road, TV&amp;H Properties. I did have a request from Pam Brokaw. This development is in her district. She's unable to be here tonight, and I talked with her last night. She asked whether it would be okay to postpone this item. I said that I would make her request known to the council and ask Denny to contact the applicant and see if there was time urgency on getting approval. And so with that, Denny, why don't you answer that question for the council and then give us some background on the, on the application?
Certainly. In my communications with TV&amp;H Properties, I visited with Nick Hackraby this afternoon. Also sent an email just notifying him of Ms. Brokaw's request. Our conversation this afternoon, Nick, as he expressed at Plan Commission, has some concerns about trying to keep a portion of the sign program on schedule. The nice thing is, is the things that's probably most urgent are the non-controversial issues that the Plan Commission, or less controversial issues that the Plan Commission discussed. The interior signage, which was agreed upon very early in the, in the conversations with the Plan Commission. The wall and building signs, which basically means that the signs that would come in are signs that would be compliant with the sign ordinance. And then the neighborhood signs, except for the highway neighborhood signs, those signs were located at the entrance to, at the Hanley Road entrance on the south side of the development. Also, two directional signs in Harmony Greens and also Market Greens, and those also were directional signs just to help the traffic work through the neighborhood without getting confused and taking roads that get them into the residential areas. I don't want to speak fully in behalf of TV&amp;H. Nick Hackraby and C.R. Hackraby are here tonight. Maybe they could confirm that position, but that's discussions I had this afternoon.
So maybe just going back to, to basics, you all know, but for the audience or people watching at home, this is a planned residential development, and so what we're talking about is a master sign plan.
Yeah, go back in history. When the common council approved the amendment to the planned residential development conditional use permit for Heritage Greens last August, one of the things I had expressed concern was, was that there was a number of signs being proposed. I requested that any decision on the sign plan be reserved until we had an opportunity to review it in more detail at the Plan Commission. It was a smittle, there were two different, three different discussions with the Plan Commission, which resulted in the recommendation that may be considered tonight. But this is a planned residential. The thing is, is this sign plan can be negotiated by the city. You're not particularly helped by the sign ordinance itself in consideration of this, of this particular plan.
So is Pam, I'm assuming is concerned with the second bullet point under the committee recommendations?
Well, in, in my conversations with Pam, the only question she asked, she didn't express any particular concerns. What she did ask was what the orientation of the reader board may be for Lot 1 or Lot 12, or what was known as parcel P-12, where the Royal Credit Union may potentially be constructed. And in my opinion, most likely that sign or reader board, if approved, would be oriented so it could be read from traffic in both directions for Hanley Road, which means the sign faces both to the west side and to the east side, and basic orientations, north and south, so.
Maybe we should just recap some of the discussion in the Plan Commission, which was that there was some hesitation over the electronic reader board component, and that has since been removed from the large highway sign. So there's, which is allowed to be a maximum of 35 feet high. That's, I guess it's called the neighborhood sign?
Neighborhood commercial sign.
Neighborhood commercial sign. And then there are perimeter signs, which are only allowed to be 15 feet high, and each, each of the businesses along Highway 35, starting from Lot number one, which you just discussed, which is the Royal Credit Union, just to the east of the south entrance into the, into Heritage Greens, and then extending along 35. This is, if you recall, we did some moving. We moved the neighborhood commercial as far away from the adjoining neighborhood in Red Cedar Canyon as we could, partially at the request of those neighbors. And so now they're all over along the road, and they'd like to have these 15-foot-high signs for each business. And the request was to have a reader, electronic reader board on each one. And Plan Commission had some reservations about that, but after a lot of discussion came to the point that they're sort of all right with the idea, but would like to have it approved with the final development plans for each one. Wasn't that the way our final?
Correct.
Recommendation came? So the only one that's being sort of pre-approved is this one at Lot 1 for Royal Credit Union. So that one is being approved with the master plan. And part of my response to the concerns over the, those homes there is that at 15 feet high, there will be a lot of shielding by, for example, the building itself from certain directions. Trees, and there's, there's a partial berm there, and some of those places may take care of part of it. It's really hard to predict exactly until you have the actual sign going in where you would need to put visual screening in to completely shield those homes. Do you want to comment on that part of it?
Yeah, I did discuss that with Ms. Brokaw a little bit, and my position was, in discussing it for today, was when the development plans would come back for Royal Credit Union, that the city would have the discretion to take a look at the location that sign is proposed or to require any mitigating considerations such as landscaping that may mitigate the visibility of that sign. Again, I'll reiterate that, in my opinion, the sign is going to be oriented so traffic can read it coming from the east and west. It's just the way it will be, most likely.
Okay. So what's your pleasure here? I think what they'd like to do is get approval for as much of this as possible. The Plan Commission recommendation is.
I can review the recommendation if you'd like. The Plan Commission recommends approval of the proposed signage plan for Heritage Greens' market signage plan as revised. Approval of the neighborhood interior and wall building signs as proposed. Revised the perimeter signs to be one sign per lot with a maximum of 80 square feet in area and maximum of 15 feet in height. A digital reader board will be allowed for Lot 1, also known as parcel P-12, with a maximum of 30 square feet, which is included as part of the overall allowance of the 80-square-foot maximum. Consideration of digital reader boards will be reserved for consideration for Lot 2. That should read parcel P-11. And Lot 3, parcel P-10 or additional lots, lots if further subdivided, budding State Trunk Highway 35 or Hanley Road at the time that development plans are submitted for review and consideration by the Plan Commission and common council. Third, all plans for signage of all the development of lots in the Heritage Market commercial neighborhood shall be submitted for review and consideration by the Plan Commission and common council as part of the development plan review process. And just to clarify that is that you're basically agreeing to general criteria, but you're also requiring, when they bring in their site plan and building plans, the sign plan has to be incorporated into that smittle. So we're reviewing it to make sure it does comply with the criteria that you may be considering this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. This is the committee recommendation. Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we've, I think, Plan Commission, we've had that in planning at least three times. Is it, would that be correct?
Three times.
Three times, and we've gone, I said, we've gone full circle, and we've gone, I think we've come at a pretty good compromise. The Highway 35 sign at first was requested with a reader board, and we said, no, we don't think that's a good deal. The other ones, we are, I believe that lot has been sold with the Royal Credit Union. Would that be it? And so that's a good thing, and that's going to be a good development there. The other two, we want to reserve the right to take a look at that, whether there's a reader board or not. The internal signs, I think, are very classy. I think they look really good, and most of the time, we've always felt real good about it. So I believe the committee has put a lot of time into this, and we've looked hard. And that's all I have to say about it.
We have considered the visual.
Right.
Effect from the road, and also for the development that's to the east. I always forget the name of that one.
Hudson Meadows.
Hudson Meadows to the east, which is directly across the road, and we'll also be looking in at those businesses. I, I would recommend approval. Further discussion?
I will recuse myself.
Mr. O'Malley recuses himself. Other discussion? Do you feel like we've addressed all of Alder Person Brokaw's concerns in her absence enough to go forward?
I, I'm not going to speak on Ms. Brokaw's behalf. I'm not sure I know enough of what, what she's asking for that. Guess the question would be is, I'd like to hear the answers from TV&amp;H, where the part with the perimeter signs and the neighborhood commercial can wait till Ms. Brokaw can participate in the discussions.
Well.
I would like to comment that Ms. Brokaw, after the public works meeting just a couple of hours ago, asked that this be postponed.
I'm aware of her desire for postponement. That's why I'm holding things up right now to say, just, do you want to respect that out of courtesy? Is there some way to fashion a compromise on that, where we approve, for example, all but that Royal Credit Union sign? I mean, can you, can you somehow?
I'm not going to speak in behalf of Ms. Brokaw.
Well, I, I am, right now, so pretend I was her. Is there any way you can approve all of this except that Royal Credit Union sign and hold that one for?
It's the desire of the common council.
Is that the desire of the common council? Otherwise, you've got a motion for approval right now. Further discussion?
I didn't think we've got an answer whether or not this issue is time critical for the, for the developer.
Well.
I mean, this particular, the question is, is this particular sign time critical for the developer?
Nick? Is the Royal Credit Union sign time critical?
Uh, it's not, but if you recall, as part of the proposed approval, they would have to, when they submit their development plans, they have to submit their signage as well, which is then looked at by the Plan Commission and the common council at a, at a date to be determined.
So if you approve the motion on the table right now, you're approving a 15-foot sign with a maximum of 30 square feet of electronic reader board, both faces. We don't know where. We'll have control over that. We don't know the orientation, but we'll have some say in that. The overall look of the sign is also required to be in keeping with the design standards of the whole development, which are very attractive, and also somewhat limit how it ends up looking.
And the final design will come back through council.
It would.
Okay.
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Where are we going next? Claims?
You already approved those.
I just thought it was.
Was the, were the applications for operators?
No.
Okay. Applications for operators licenses, we've got a couple. Finance Committee recommends approval. We've got for Mr. Morissette, would like to be recused from this vote. We've got regular operators licenses for four individuals, John Herring, Tony Qualinton, and Aaron Johnson, from now until June 30th, 2010, and a temporary license for Jim Londo for May 12th, that Green Bay Packers tailgate tour.
Move for approval.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Discussion?
Do we have approval from Chief Jensen?
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the licenses are approved. Next item is number eight, discuss potential reorganization of city utilities. City Administrator Willie has a report. Maybe you want to go through that report. When you get done, I'll tell about the finance committee's recommendation.
About a month ago, no action was taken on this. The finance committee wanted more time to think about the options available. Mayor Knutson had set out some possible scenarios that could be done in reference to the way our water and wastewater utilities are structured. In the interim, I contacted about 30 municipalities, 25 of whom have separate water and wastewater facilities. There are some municipalities in certain areas that have joint wastewater, joint water facilities, so I eliminated them from the study. I contacted them, asked them about their organizational structure, meaning did they have one director for both wastewater and water? Did they have an administrative oversight person with water and wastewater supervisors under, or did they have separate water and wastewater directors? We looked at the governing bodies, whether they had a common council committee in charge, whether they had a separate utility commission, perhaps that handled water, wastewater, electric, some combination. Or the third scenario was what the City of Hudson has, where they have a utility commission that deals with the operations of the water utility and the public works committee, which deals with the operations of the wastewater utility. Talked about, with each of these municipalities, about the number of employees, got information on their quarterly bills, and asked all of them how long they've had the structure and had there been any movement or discussion about changing the way they are set up. What we found was there is no specific type of structure, either supervisory or the way the governing body operates that is more prevalent than any other. There's also no combination where all of the people that have utility commissions have a certain kind of supervisory structure. So they were kind of all over the board. In talking to the different administrators or utility directors, the majority of them stated, however it was set up when they formed the utility is how they've had it since, and there really haven't been any changes. There were two that I noted in my report. The City of Beaver Dam recently had a retirement of their water utility director, and they combined under now one director with water and wastewater. And the City of Oconomewalk, about 15 years ago, went from a utility commission to having a committee of the council, be the governing body. In looking at the rates that were resultant from these different types of structures, again, there was no clear-cut differentiation between whether a certain type of governing body resulted in lower rates, or a certain kind of supervisory structure resulted in a lower rate. You know, this is a very preliminary study. It doesn't get into why rates may be what they are, whether there was some structural reason their rates are higher, they had to do a certain thing to their utilities. There's also whatever the community will accept for rates. That always impacts how these rates are set up. There was Alder Person Wyland mentioned at the finance committee about water quality, wastewater quality. There are differences, I'm sure, but they, all the permanent natural resources is very particular about both water and wastewater. So there's all a minimum standard that all these municipalities need to meet. Our water utility and our wastewater utility have always gotten excellent marks, probably above and beyond what other ones have, but I didn't get into that with them. And I did ask if they had any comments or any, you know, things they'd like to share. Again, they're kind of all over the board. You had some cities that said we would never, never even consider having a utility commission. We like the council being in charge. And you had one of the administrator oversight people say, well, the city council has enough to worry about it, that's why we like to have the utility commission separate. It's basically here as information for you to, we were thinking maybe there would be one type of structure, one type of governing body that would be prevalent, and there really isn't. And this is just a sampling. I don't know if we went bigger, if we would find something, if we went smaller, if we would find something. But this is just intended to give you some information, a sampling. Any questions on it? Anything else I can?
In the finance committee, the, we had a majority opinion and a minority opinion. The majority, and the recommendation to the council is to leave the utility structure and organization as it is. The, the minority opinion was that we might still want to look at, and would not be procluded from looking at, a change which would be to abolish the statutory form of the water utility, or the Public Utility Commission. Statutory meaning what's called for in Wisconsin state law, and create a hybrid commission. That would be more on the order of what?
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam.
Oh, Baraboo.
Baraboo had, wherein you've got a committee, a commission that operates the utility, but the financial decisions still, financial and personnel decisions still come back. but the financial decisions still, financial and personnel decisions still come back to the city council. Now, the difference being that you could, you know, the water utility has a vacancy at director, they have advertised, the commission has accepted applications, they're beginning to review those applications. It's time for, it's a good time for us to review this, but time is drawing short. And so, by the time they've gone forward and hired someone, it'll be more difficult to change that, what we're calling the supervisory structure. However, the governing body structure could still be changed. And so, committee recommendation is to leave the water utility structure as it is.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the committee recommendation, any discussion?
I'd like to commend Devin on the tremendous amount of work he put into this study. It was very helpful in determining what to do, which is to leave things the way they are. I think it's re, also to, we should remark that of all of the cities that you looked at, only two had rates lower for their citizens than Hudson, and that is Baraboo and Sun Prairie, both of which exist under the umbrella of Madison. And of those two, one of them, Sun Prairie, has exactly the same setup that we do. I think it tells us to leave it the way it is.
Other discussion?
Well, I didn't draw the same conclusion. We're one of three municipalities out of the twenty-five that were looked at that have the structure that we do, that is wastewater reporting through city council and water utility reporting through commission. I think that committee makes sense, and the expertise that's there, that's in place, we should retain. I guess I just have the opinion that with the money that's spent, and it's taxpayer money, that there should be elected officials overseeing those expenditures. We're elected so that we can be unelected, if people aren't happy with how money's being spent. I just, I think that's an oversight piece that is important, that's currently not in place. When we put the hiring freeze in place, it applied to everyone except water. You know, if we want to look at any personnel changes in the future, and I'm not suggesting we do that now, we can't even, we're not even able to do that because they are outside of the governance of the city council. I don't know why we wouldn't want that additional oversight, and I don't know why taxpayers wouldn't want that additional oversight when it comes to not the running of the facilities, but the finances and the personnel. Maybe my minority opinion.
Other comments?
I said it before, if Dane broke, don't fix it, and I don't think we need to put any more stuff on top of us. They've been doing a great job for so long, and they've got it down. To me, it seems like a power grab, I don't care, I don't need to, they've made good decisions, and I think they can continue to do that, that course. So, I call the question.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Four to one. Passes. Next is review bids submitted for two thousand and nine lawn mowing service. Committee, staff recommendation was to accept bids using option number two. And I think this is important enough, maybe we want to go through this a little bit. Our process has been to first review whether we should do the bidding at all, we decided to do so. We developed a bid package that broke down the parks, the trail system, the road right-of-ways, and mowing around some of our city buildings. And we broke it down into those various components so that there were about ten separate numbers that each bidder could choose to give, or they could bid lump sum for everything. Or they could bid in sort of a package, like for example, all the parks. It was a little complex, but it was well received, we had twenty-three bidders. If you were to throw out the two highest bidders, which were considerably higher than any of the others, on a lump sum basis, the average is around sixty-five thousand dollars for the lump sum bids. There were four who bid lump sum that was around forty-five or forty-six thousand dollars or less. And the low bidder lump sum came to, I believe it was thirty-three, thirty-three thousand dollars. Because there were various components, and part of our strategy was try to break it down so that if there was someone who could not handle all of that, but might be willing to bid on a smaller portion, if you looked at the two, the lowest ways to combine any two contractors' bids, you come up with the bids from Gruber and Comstock for a total of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. And that is option two, that's both the recommendation from staff and the recommendation from the Finance Committee. Did Public Works review this?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Same recommendation?
Our recommendation is to accept option number two.
Yes. And we did consider, the lowest price option that we could come up with was, which was to combine the bids of three separate contractors, taking the lowest components. And there was option three and four, combining three, we could save about another thousand to fifteen hundred dollars in various combinations there, in other words, you could get it down to twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. But, you'd have the additional complexity of dealing with three different contractors. And so, that's why the staff recommendation is to deal with only two. The other component to this, for your, for your review, we went through a process of developing our internal costs and did the best we could with that. It's something that we really haven't done before. It was a goal of mine that I stated back a year ago, that we should make an attempt to do some activity-based costing. And Finance Director Betty Crusos has expressed her support for doing that. It is a little difficult, and part of it is, you have to learn how to break up the cost of equipment that's used for more than one task, and try to get that down to a number and say, "Well, how much is this truck being used for lawn mowing? And how much is it being used for something else?" But, we made a good try. And I'd say that the components of this were the labor cost, the equipment cost, the fuel cost, oil maintenance, belts, and so on, disposables like that. And our labor number is good, we're pretty confident in the labor number. We keep track pretty closely of where they are, it's not perfect, I wouldn't say that's the exact number of hours that we spend lawn mowing, but it's a pretty good number. The equipment is by its nature a little bit harder, you can see on your spreadsheet that we allocated the cost of a truck and a trailer, and the various amount of time that is estimated for each year to mow each park. So, at the top of the spreadsheet, Anderson Park has a number there for depreciation cost, fuel cost, and so on. So, I give staff some credit, they tackled this and spent some time on it, and it's a reasonably good number. I don't think anybody would swear that this is the exact number, but it's reasonably good. And the number they came up with for our internal cost is a total of forty...
Sixty-one, two sixty-five for?
Yeah, sixty-one, two sixty-five for the total. The labor component is, what, forty-one? Forty-one thousand for the labor component. I recommend we also recommend option two. Any discussion?
Is that the total then, with labor and the actual work that we have done in the past, is sixty-one, two, is that what you're saying?
That's our best estimate.
Estimate.
Randy, I just want to inject, that also includes depreciation on the equipment that can be attributed to this endeavor, lawn mowing, which is eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars a year. So, since we're going to, that equipment will continue to depreciate whether it's in use or not. So, to be fair, you should subtract that eighty-five, sixty-two from the sixty-one, you're going to get fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars as the real cost.
Well.
And so, I guess for TV, because we've got a lot of numbers in front of us, what is our total savings if we accept the bid?
Well, it's between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's our estimate. And I agree and disagree with Mr. O'Malley. I think where you would make that adjustment is you'd actually say, "Our lawn mowing cost for two thousand and nine will be the amount of bid option two, plus the depreciation on our equipment that we're recommending we continue to own." So, our cost actually is probably closer to thirty-five thousand versus our internal cost where we'd go status quo, which is in the neighborhood of sixty-two thousand.
It's actually going to be about thirty-nine thousand when you add in the depreciation. And we have another consideration, which is not monetary. We have half a dozen retirees who do this for us every year, and they do a lot more than just mow lawns. But, I think that this is an effort worth trying, and we'll see how it goes.
And I'm assuming when you develop the contract, you'll be involved, so we know that we're getting every service that we've had up until then, including, all of a sudden, we need a park cut, we're going to get that done, or Public Works is going to do it outside of the contract if we need it done?
No, the contract.
The scope of work will be governed by the bids, the request for proposals that was put out. That's what these people have bid on, that's what they've said they'll do, they'll have a new contract. Then there'll be other terms, termination and term and stuff like that. But, the scope of work is defined by the bid documents.
But, no contingencies for anything that may come up?
We're governed by the contract. It's black letter, we have to follow that. I don't think we can vote on this without taking into consideration for half a second the tremendous amount of work that Tom Zulley and Deb Andrews of our Public Works and Parks Department put in on this. They put in a lot of hours to give us this valuable information, which allows us to make this decision, they should be recognized. And I will move that we accept option number two as stated.
Second?
And we, in Finance, talked about making it contingent on a satisfactory contract being drawn up.
Sure, okay, that's fine. I'll include that, if it's okay.
Motion to accept the bids as specified in option number two, for a total of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, contingent on contract. Being drawn up. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Motion passes. Next item is number eleven, two thousand and nine urban forestry startup grant. We received a grant from the Wisconsin DNR for urban forestry in the amount of four thousand dollars. It's a matching grant, and so, we'll have to match it with four thousand dollars of our own. What we intend to use it for is tree planting and tree pruning, tree inventory and management plan and public outreach. I hope we can buy as many trees as we can, we have new areas of town that still can use public improvement trees. My intention of Mr. Zulley is to develop a volunteer base to help with the planting so that we maximize how many trees we can get planted for the eight thousand dollars that we'll have. And the staff recommendation and Finance recommendation is to accept the grant of four thousand dollars and allocate it towards the shade tree operating budget.
So moved.
Motion in a second to accept the grant. Discussion?
Would like to comment for those people who may have noticed Lakefront Trail today, where Excel Energy is removing undergrowth, invasive foliage and vegetation. It was, I think, about a nanosecond before I started getting phone calls about trees getting cut down, down there. Yes, that is true, but the good trees, the maples were left, and this grant, part of this grant, will go to replanting good trees along Lakefront Trail, so no need to worry.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Next item is to consider participating in the Department of Transportation road salt bid for two thousand and ten. This comes from Public Works, we reviewed it in Finance, recommend that we do. Scott?
Yes, we recommend that we do participate this year because of what happened last year, which was brought out and discussed in Finance. If you look at the previous four years of our independent purchasing, as opposed to the county purchasing through the state program, there's a difference of thirty-four cents a year on average, essentially they're the same. But, last year, we got clobbered, we paid a hundred and three dollars per ton, we buy fourteen hundred tons, so this is not insignificant amount of money. The state program was closer to fifty-five dollars, and we'd like to get back down there. To give our people at home an idea of how we spend this, the average snowstorm, if it brings four inches or more, under our old plan, cost about ten thousand dollars in snow removal every time. And this year, it's cost us more than that, so we'd like to get back down to that.
That was a motion.
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion. Any discussion? This past year, we purchased some equipment designed to try to help us get to a lower consumption of salt. There are a variety of reasons why we want to get to a lower consumption of salt. Financial is probably chief among them, but followed closely by environmental concerns. We live where we have water that runs directly from streets, in many cases into our storm sewer, and more or less straight out into the St. Croix, and so, we're sensitive to what we are putting on our streets. At the same time, we've got Lake Malaloo, and so, we're sensitive to trying to minimize it. We did purchase some pre-wetting equipment, which I don't think has really been used yet.
Hasn't arrived yet.
Hasn't arrived yet. We have purchased the anti-icing, which we're just kind of getting the hang of that. That's where you go out before the storm, spray calcium chloride on to help the ice and snow from adhering as much, make it easier to plow free. I wouldn't say that we're really ready to say one way or another on that. That's a new technique and a new technology, and we didn't get it going until into the season.
That's right, and we believe that the literature, we know, tells us we can save thirty percent on purchase of salt because of using this equipment. We're playing it safe, and our bid for the state salt is twenty percent below what we normally use. This past season, we used eighteen hundred tons of salt, we ordered fourteen hundred, we used all that, we used four hundred that we had left over from the previous year. So, eighty percent of the eighteen hundred is fourteen hundred and forty tons, that's what we plan to order.
We've typically had a stockpile left over at the end of the season, I should say often. And the decision we made at budget time last year was to do our best to utilize our entire stockpile with the idea that replenishment cost to be less in two thousand and nine than it was. And I think that's going to happen because there was a, there was a little bit of an artificial spike in that salt cost last year.
A local salt has gone from, for commercial, small batches, from a hundred and seventy dollars to a hundred per ton.
So, the equipment we purchased is for de-icing, correct?
Well, it don't, you don't use, we don't use the term de-icing, it's anti-icing, which is done in high-traffic locations before the snow hits so that it has less chance of adhering to the surface, and it's easier for us to blade it off. And then, there's pre-wetting, which is creating a brine solution, can be done with calcium chloride, can be done with sodium chloride. We're going to be experimenting this next season with a mixture of calcium chloride, which is good to colder temperatures, with more environmentally friendly mixtures. We're going to be trying beet juice, which is not red, and we're going to be also using a compound made from Wisconsin... And we're going to be also using a compound made from Wisconsin's favorite product, cheese.
We need, this is another example where we need to aggressively pursue every innovative technology or strategy we can to try to minimize the amount of salt we're putting out there. There's pretty broad agreement on that. The pre-wetting process, the regular salt doesn't start to melt until it's in contact with the snow for a period of time. If you wet it, it stops the bounce, makes it land and stick more, so that as it's being spread, it doesn't bounce and fly off. A little bit less likely to blow away in strong wind, and a lot more likely to get working right away. So that generally, once you learn to do this, you can put out less salt and have the same effect.
You save about thirty percent, they say.
Should be able to save thirty percent. We're really hoping for next year we can do that. Further discussion?
So again, we don't know the price, though, before we say.
Well, this is a blindfolded thing. What we're doing is, we're tagging in with the Wisconsin DOT on a mass statewide bid. There, it's your typical quantity buy, but when you commit to do it, you don't know what the ultimate price will be. We're essentially saying, you do the bidding, we'll take the price you get. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Motion passes. And where does that take us? Number thirteen is treasurer's report. We received the treasurer report on the table. We had a brief version of it from Betty tonight, but she was not able to stay for this meeting. And because we got it so late, it's twelve pages long. I suggested that that be brought back at the next meeting, and we'll talk about it in the finance and bring it back to the council as well. For number fourteen, I'd like to postpone that, and we'll meet at the end of our other business for that. That is to consider convening in the closed session. Public Works Committee. Number one, review current refuse collection service contract and consider advertising for bids.
Recommendation from Public Works is that we advertise for bids. The consideration we had within the committee meeting was whether or not to approach the village of North Hudson and the township of Hudson, as we had done five years before when we negotiated this contract, to gain more clout through higher population numbers, to perhaps strike a better deal. We found in the negotiation last time around that it really doesn't work with the township, because their refuse collection is entirely different proposition, houses further apart, long driveways in some case that they have to go down. It's not like here in the city where all the garbage carts are, the refuse carts are lined up in the roadway, along the roadway, or in the alleyways, and they just knock them down one by one. It's much more efficient for them, and we get a much better rate. It is generally considered, from what we've heard from other municipalities, that they're kind of envious of the rate that we negotiated. Violia is our current contractor and will be through the remainder of this calendar year. They've asked to extend the contract, but with numerous changes, which is really not an extension of the contract. We've decided to go out for bid, to give everyone a chance. We decided also against trying to get the village of North Hudson involved this time. Their garbage collection contract is so different from ours that it's really a case of apples and oranges, and we feel it would just impede our progress. So, the recommendation is to put the request for proposal out for bids for garbage collection for another multi-year contract.
Second? Motion in a second to go out to bid on refuse and recycling contract. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? We will do bids. Next item is the proposed ordinance four dash oh nine to consider an amendment to the municipal code, chapter two twelve dash nine, regarding snow and ice removal.
Move for first reading, excuse me, move to suspend.
We have a motion to suspend the rules towards adoption of ordinance dash four, or four dash oh nine.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess I should point out that when you arrived tonight, there was the language of the ordinance on the table. Did everybody see that?
It just took what was in the memo form, put it in formal ordinance.
The pertinent section is the addition of this sentence. The requirement shall also apply to pedestrian ramps, which shall be cleared to the full width of said ramp. You want to approve it tonight? If you do, we need a motion to that effect. We not vote on the other?
We need to vote on.
No.
Oh, yeah, you did.
We did.
Vote on the, suspend the rules?
You've got a motion and a second, but no vote?
We have no vote on.
Well, then we better have a vote. Any other discussion? I thought we voted. All in favor, say aye on.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, say no.
Move to adopt ordinance dash four dash oh nine.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance four oh nine, say yes.
Yes. Aye.
Adapted. Reposed? Housekeeping, I think.
It allows the zoning or the code enforcement officer, who has been arguing, but it doesn't say specifically pedestrian ramp, so they've been arguing about whether they have to bring on or not.
Well, it's compliance with ADA, these are handicap ramps.
It allows them, you know, to be able to cite someone for it.
Okay. Let's get moving. Public Safety Committee, request for two five-minute parking spaces at four thirty-one Second Street. The recommendation is to, was to recommend that the pickup parking space on Walnut Street at Second Street be restored to a metered parking space, and to designate two parking spaces on the west side of Second Street at Walnut Street as ten-minute parking spaces. That's the motion for Public Safety. Am I right, Lee?
That's correct. Actually, Lori can speak to that.
Did I say it correctly? Would you like to make it a motion?
I will make it a motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adopt the committee recommendation. Any discussion?
Just clarification, we are taking one ten-minute spot out on Walnut Street and putting two on Second Street. Is that what this is?
I think in brief, I could say that the one that's going back to metered was probably put in more or less at the request of the Chinese restaurant for their takeout customers.
Yes, it was.
Now have Burt's Coffee that's there in the same general vicinity who was asking for it, and rather have, on two different streets, they decided to make two spaces, ten minutes, to essentially serve both purposes. The coffee's probably more at a different time of day than the Chinese takeout is.
Well, that, Barker's and San Pedro's too.
Probably some others as well.
We'd like to request Chief Johnson to give a little pep talk to all the officers about keeping an eye on those two spots, because we did have a ten-minute un-metered spot at the other end of Second Street, on the south end there. And that unfortunately was often, to my observation, this is only anecdotal, the resting place of a car that was stayed, or cars, that stayed for a long time without having to pay a meter. Much past ten minutes. So, after ten minutes, kick the rascals out, okay?
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Say no? Motion passes. Okay, next we have requests for crosswalks and stop signs in Red Cedar Canyon. The committee recommendation was to recommend the installation of a stop sign on Canyon Boulevard at West Canyon Drive, to install pedestrian crosswalk markings and signage at Dunbury Pass and East Canyon Drive, at Spring Hill Bay and East Canyon Drive, and Spring Brook Bay and East Canyon Drive, and to install a yield sign on Prosperity Way, Ashberry Court, at Tribute Avenue. Move to approve? We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Excuse me, could I amend my motion to add to it, if I understand this correctly, that any cost of these signs that's not already included in the development plan is to be paid by the association residential fees? I think that's the recommendation of the committee?
Well.
That's not what we recommend.
Well, that's what it says under budget impact. It says additional signage not included in development plans to be paid by association slash development residents.
Okay, Danny, could you help us address this issue? Because I believe we have certain subdivisions who have roads that are not dedicated to the public, but for public streets, we don't ask the associations to pay for street signage.
That's correct. Typically, it's the city expense if there's a private roadway. I think we have every right to request that the developer or an association pay for that cost, but typically, after the installation of streets and the initial set of stoplights or signage, the seize always, as far as I know, is always paid the expense of the installation after that.
Okay, so then the, go ahead.
This phrase really is not germane to this issue sheet.
I would agree with that, Scott.
Okay, so I strike that addition, then.
I think it will come out of our signage budget, of which, Tom, we have a budget for installation of new signs and replacement of damaged signs, and this will need to come out of that budget, right? Other discussion?
Just a couple of questions for Marty. Have we done a traffic study for the stop signs?
Do we do a traffic study of stop signs?
Our policy or our guidelines that we adopted, or the Safety Committee adopted, should we follow our procedures that we've adopted?
Well, I think this instance is somewhat, not, I won't say unusual, but it's not an issue so much of traffic volume as it is of it being somewhat of a blind intersection. And I know Chief Johnson and Mary Yaku drove through the area, and it was the chief's observation that we needed because of the difficult visibility of that intersection.
Would it make sense at that particular intersection to remove the shrubbery that's in the way there? So people could see what's going on, rather than, then rather than put a stop sign in to remove the shrubs there?
We've been there, most of them are still trees planted by the developer, so, I don't know.
And again, one of the other questions I had to follow through on our procedure was how many accidents we've had at that particular intersection?
Stop sign or yield sign?
A stop sign.
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think those are good points. And of course, often, one of the most common requests from neighborhoods for stop signs is for traffic calming, which is really not the intent of stop signs. And so that's part of your issue, is that the Safety Committee has talked about really the intent of a stop sign is to make the less traveled road stop and wait for the more traveled road in cases where it'd be unsafe unless someone had a definite stop. In these low-traffic areas, that doesn't really apply. So, we're dealing with the committee recommendation. I'd say I don't think that this is going to be a big problem either way, but I'd respect the committee.
Question?
Excuse me, I have a question on Madam Clerk. Nancy, did I actually get a second to my motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear it, that's all.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed?
No.
We have, the motion is adopted, four to one vote. Next, we've got, what? Unfinished business, the application of Thomas DeChando for taxi cab service license and taxi cab driver's license doing business as Gold Cab, three four four Southern Pacific Road, Hudson, Wisconsin. We have a public hearing tonight.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed, say no. And the motion is adopted, and the license is granted, licenses are granted.
Upon issuance, or some filing of the insurance and so forth.
Upon issuance, issuance upon receipt of proof of insurance and other requirements.
Inspection of vehicles.
Inspection. I did the appointment to the park board already. I'd like to appoint Steve Wilcox to the revolving loan fund of St. Croix Economic Development Corporation. I'm not sure if I need the council's approval for that. If so, it's not on the agenda. It's not a city, it's not, it's kind of.
I think they make recommendations to this council of approving a loan.
All right, well, let's put that on future agenda and vote on that. But the next meeting is March twenty-fifth, and Steve can't be there anyway, so it can, it can be. But he'll, no, our meeting is April fourth, but the St. Croix EDC revolving loan fund is, and we had a resignation there, too. Mike Lashit was serving on that and has resigned. And so I'd like Steve to take that spot. And so that's a communication for next time, for a next agenda. I'd like to draw your attention to the photocopy of the page from the League of Municipalities magazine on the conservation water rates that I had included in your packet. We are attempting to adopt sustainable practices, one of which is whenever we can to reduce the amount of our natural resources that we're using, and this is one way. It has been endorsed by the EDC, or PSC, I should say. What else have we got? I think that might be it for me. Any council, any, let's see, what we have here, what do we just combobulate it? Any older person? Communications or items for future agendas? City attorney? City administrator?
There's an update on the table tonight.
One of the, one of the bullet points on the city administrator update is that we received notification today that we did not receive funds from the first round, phase one, of highway stimulus funding. Applications for phase two are due on April first. Our biggest project that we applied for was the Carmichael Road project, which is shovel-ready, and we will be going forward with applying for phase two on that one. It's a trunk road, it meets the state specifications, it is involved with one of the busiest intersections in the state, exit two, through the second heaviest-traveled corridor in the state. It's ready to go, and I can't imagine a more deserving project. We will hopefully receive word on the phase two funding before our bids on that need to be adopted. We may have to have a special meeting, depending on how the word comes down on that. City administrators done. I think that's it, except for our last item is to consider convening in the closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G of Wisconsin statutes to confer with legal counsel regarding possible litigation concerning our ambulance billing services contract. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second?
Motion in a second to go into closed session. Roll call vote. Yes.
Weyland?
Yes.
Montez?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, and we will convene in the closed session. Thank you all for coming. You can stay.
Sit down.